First I do ask for that pledge. Prayer will be led by Councilmember Copeland and the pledge will be led by Councilwoman Garcia.
If you would like to participate, please bow your head. Gracious Father, this evening we thank you for another opportunity to come together as city and council to make decisions for the movement and the betterment of our community. Father, we ask of God this evening for grace and wisdom and knowledge as we go throughout this meeting. Father, we thank you, oh God, for those who are citizens of this great city who have come to share their voice and lend their ears. We ask of God that we will be able to be active listeners, to hear the heart and the intentions of our residents, and that our hearts as council will be heard from our residents. Father, we thank you for continuous growth, development, and success in the city of Saginaw. We continue to thank you for the residents that will continue to come into our city. We thank you for continuous and growth of revenue. We thank you that the days of yesterday are going to be greater for tomorrow. We thank you for a greater future. Father, we ask of God that you give us all wisdom and guidance this evening, and I pray this in your Son Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, call please.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams is absent. Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Mayor Protem Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
You have eight members present and one absent.
Thank you. Good evening, citizens. I'd like to welcome everyone who have came in and those who are on SGTV to tune in. This is a public meeting of city council. The audience, we ask you to remain quiet, no clapping, no booing, no obnoxious behavior. I'd like to remind all council persons to put your phones on vibrate or shut them off. An audience, if you could do the same thing, I sure appreciate it. Madam clerk, do we have any announcements?
Yes, Mayor, we have a few. Council Communication Number 10 has been revised to decrease the amount in your manager's recommendation, and revised copies have been placed on the council table. The presidential primary election is next Tuesday, February 27, and early voting has begun for voters that would like to obtain and tabulate their ballot. The Saginaw County Early Vote Center at 618 Cass is now open daily from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. through this Sunday, and Wednesday the hours are 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The city clerk's office will be open this Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for absentee voting, and voters that are returning an absentee ballot are encouraged to drop it off in person at the clerk's office or by utilizing one of the four drop boxes to be sure that it reaches the clerk's office by 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. Absentee ballots may also be taken to the early vote center where voters can tabulate their ballot themselves. And that takes us to public hearings.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. It is for the property owners that received a single lot, single assessment notice to the state and to state their objections. Speakers are limited to their remarks to this subject only. Begin by stating your name, property address, and you are limited to three minutes. Speakers should address the council as a whole. Objections will be submitted, I'm sorry, yeah, objections will be submitted to the appropriate department for reviewing recommendations. Any support document must be handed to the city clerk, and a public hearing is not a question and answer, period. So, we will not be answering your questions, we will refer to the necessary department. We now open it up to the public, to the public hearing. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak on this matter?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Darnita Hodge, resident at 1623 Southmore Avenue. My objection is that your city came out to my property, I own several properties where my houses are, and I had a fence put up and the wood was sitting on my property at 1639, but I had to sign up saying free wood. I guess the people that was getting the wood pushed some over to the side of 1639. And I had a knock on the door from someone from the city said I violated the city code. And I was asking them why and how did I violate the city code? They told me because wood was sitting on property of 1639. I told them that, said I would be violated and fined for that. So I asked them, could I find somebody to come get the wood and get it off their property? Because the way the property stands is that my property is here, 1639 is here, and the wood was sitting on my property at 1639. They didn't give me a chance to even get the wood removed. And that's why I'm coming here to object, this fine that the city has put on me. This is my first time doing this, so I don't know if I'm doing right or what, so, you know,
but I thank y'all for listening to me. And you said that the objection to go further on to someone else? Yeah.
Okay, well, I thank you for listening.
No, thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on this matter with the single lot assessment? You know what, I can hear.
Then I have to come up.
She has one, come on up, sweetie.
My name is Saucen Yassen, and I'm the property manager for my brother. So, I have two bills here regarding trash removal. It was occupied by a tenant, and we got the letter from the city. We told the tenant to remove it, but he did not do that. And we did not do it because once in the past we got sued, that we took his stuff, and he sued us for $60,000. So anyway, I know that the city removed the things, I know there is a bill, but I am asking if we can, like, get a fair market value for that, because I know the city marked it up because they don't want to do this work, that's what the city told me. So I just request if we can lower the bill, that would be appreciated. We have several properties at the city of Saginaw. We tried to buy houses that need work, we're trying to do the city a better place, so I would really appreciate it if the bill can be lowered.
Thank you. If you have any documents, can you hand them to the clerk?
Yeah, I have three, two for trash and one for grass removal, which is $158.24, and they literally cut just the front. Like, if we got an order, my contractor can't do it for $20. They just cut the front, and like, bills are outrageous, and I know where the city's coming from, but because we have no control when the tenants are there, like, I would appreciate your consideration for that.
What are the addresses for the record?
What is that?
What are the addresses of the lots?
The addresses are 713, I think Hamilton, there's 907 Bond, 2815 Macana. The 713, I'll just double check the name of the street, it's for grass. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this subject? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Denise Charlton. I'm here in regards to my mother Lily Charlton. She is in a nursing home, she's been in a nursing home since 2018. They have my name on her property far as property taxes. They say that they came out and cut the grass. I never saw a warning letter, I never received a warning letter. I received this letter at my home. Her residence is 1185 East Auto Drive. It was sent to my house, 409 North Ranger Street, and it's $158. They say they cut the back, the backyard is fenced in, so I asked if they have pictures, they said they have pictures. So I'm not sure how they got in the backyard, I don't know if they cut the lock off or how this is supposed to happen, they say they have pictures. And I just wanted to say I never got a warning. And if they had a warning on the door, I didn't see it, because like I said, I don't live in my mom's house, and it's, you know, it's been empty, you know, since she's been in a nursing home. So I'm not really sure about this bill, and you know, and I don't know if you're supposed to get warnings, but I never got a warning. So I'm asking to have this bill, you know, because if my mother's in a nursing home, I really don't have the money to pay the bill for her. So I don't really know what to do or what y'all can do in this, in this matter.
You have any documents that you might have?
I just have this, this is my home.
Okay. I'm sorry, ma'am, but do you have any documents?
This is the document I have. So do I give this to them?
Is there anything that you'd like for the clerk to have so that we can review it?
I mean, they...
I don't want to take your copy, did you make some extra ones?
No, I, no, this is, this is all brand new to me. I've never been in this situation. Like I said, I never got a warning, so I've never had to do this. So I didn't know I needed to make copies. I mean, I'm quite sure y'all had this on record somewhere.
Mayor, I just believe they have the notices.
Good. She said, "Yeah, we do." So, it'll be referred to the property department so that it can be reviewed.
Okay, did I give documentation of what I said the address was, mine and my mother's?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this public hearing? Yes?
Is it about property?
Property.
Mayor, he has signed up for public input, so we just need to make sure...
Are you here for public input? Did you call in to sign up for public input?
Yes, I did.
Okay, that's not yet.
Okay.
That's not yet, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I'm sorry too.
No, that's okay, we both can be sorry tonight. So, okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this public hearing? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this public hearing? Last and final time, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this public hearing? I need a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved, support.
It's been moved in support. All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Aye, say it. Madam clerk?
The public input.
Speakers, you are to remain courteous and respectful at all times. When you approach the podium, please state your name. The clerk will keep time, you have three minutes to present. Please remember, audience, no rude, obnoxious behavior, booing, clapping, any of that, please don't do that. Madam clerk?
Our first speaker is Herbert Williams.
Now, Mr. Williams, you can come talk to me.
Thank you. Your Honor, Mayor, City Council, my name is Herbert Charles Williams. I was born and raised in the city, but this is my story. I bought my home in March 18, 2008. My first sign of racism there was immediately, meaning a lot of the white people began to come on my property at night, throw at my home, and kill the plants on my property. But it escalated last year at my church, right in front of my church. The white man across the street from the church conveniently was letting his dogs out on the congregation as we left the church. But this time, he let them loose on an 80-year-old black woman, and I'm in charge of security, I'm a deacon, but I'm also in charge of security, so I'm licensed to carry a weapon. So I went outside, knowing that this man is watching, and he's behind a black screen on the porch. So he's letting the dogs out, and when I went out, I came out with my gun drawn, it was pointed at the ground, and I took the safety off and I cocked it to let him know if the dogs come out again, I'm going to shoot them. And then I started escorting women and children out of the church safely. While I was doing that, he came out, acting like he was cutting the grass, but he was looking to see who it was, and it was me. And when I saw him, I realized that I knew him from him harassing me in front of my house. I live in the township, but the church is in the city. And so, once he saw me, things began to escalate even more on my property. So I'm outside cutting my grass one day, and I hear gunshots. This is about five days after the incident in front of the church. And my bishop, Bishop Allen, he did file a complaint on this. I think I gave you a copy of it. And it states, you know, this has happened numerous times, and, well, I'm sure that you can read this, I don't want to read it for you, but she even says he knows they were intentionally released on us because it's happened numerous times. I went and got a copy of this, and I went to find out who investigated it, and the officer who was supposed to investigate it was Lieutenant or Detective Sergeant Matthew Giraffe. And he said that...
Okay, wrap it up, start to wrap it up for me, please.
Okay, I will right now. He said, "I should call animal control." That's all he said. So he didn't investigate it at all. So now, I've been ran off the road, I've seen people come on my property at 3:00 in the morning, and, you know, I feel like my life is being threatened. So if it is being threatened, then I have no problem dying for what I'm going to stand for. And what I'm standing for is, you know, justice, this has to stop. This is in front of my church.
Okay, Mr. Williams, what we'll do is, if you want to stay after, you can, but you only get three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Martunu Fosana.
Is she in hallway?
Let's move on to Inez Williams. Joyce Seals?
She's here.
Good evening, council, to the mayor, Mayor Protem, city manager, and staff.
Good evening.
Good evening. I come to represent the Saginaw County Prevention Coalition and organization of agencies who work together to protect our students and their families from hurt, harm, and danger, and provide opportunities for them to have safe activities in our community. I also represent my local church, why I'm the co-pastor, and other concerned citizens as well. I come to ask you as our elected officials who represent our community to review the marijuana ordinance. Periodically, all responsible legislative bodies should review the impact of legislative actions and decisions that they have made to determine if there needs to be any modifications based on updated information gathered. We currently have ten operational marijuana retailers and two growers. We have two retailers in the process and one grower in the process. One of the questions, as citizens, and we're talking quite a bit in the community, we're asking this, when are there enough? In all fairness to those who have already opened, saturating the marketplace with additional marijuana outlets will cause their profits to decrease. We're suggesting a moratorium, that is a temporary solution until we study our options and the impact of our decisions. As our representatives for the city of Saginaw, we need for you to have the strength to make some tough decisions to ensure that our city stays a place where people want to live, work, play, and plant their business. Even our neighbor Saginaw Township put a moratorium on car washes and storage company. Why? Because they studied and saw they had too many, wanted to protect the businesses they had. So let us at least take a timeout to assess our state and make any changes necessary to ensure that we won't be known as the marijuana headquarters. Surely, I don't want to be known for that. But instead, let's be a medical, educational, and recreational destination. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandra Robinson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Sandra Robinson. Protocol has been established, I'm from Saginaw County Prevention Coalition, I'm the Prevention Coalition Coordinator. I'm also a citizen, and I'm a retired teacher. Recently, I attended CACA, which is Coalition Against, I'll keep going, long thing, and I'm looking at my time, and there were 4,300 people there, 600 of them were teenagers. And one of the things that they talked about was the power of advertising. And with the power of advertising, you create awareness, you set the agenda, you suggest an influence, you convey new information, and there's a power to persuade. They said with advertising, and according to teens, they said advertising comes in all forms. And one of their biggest concerns was marijuana prevention among youth. And they said, they asked us, they said, "Can you please protect us?" They said advertising is not just what we see, it's what we hear, it's what we are surrounded by. And when we look at the retail outlets that we are surrounded by, our teens see them constantly. When we look at the zoning ordinances, it could be within 1,000 feet of a school. Do you know that a mile is 5,280 feet? So when you look at that, imagine how many can actually be within a school, because they could be within 500 feet of each other. So basically, they could be just a block away, a few feet away. They said marijuana and accessibility and advertising includes perception, photos, advertising, and desensitization. They said we are getting to the point that we are making things normal. They said as parents and adults and citizens, they said, "Can we please stop making things normal?" These are the words that came from the teens. They said, "Let prevention become prevention." Normalization is the act of making something normal or regular. This is why with advertising, when you go down the street, you see McDonald's, Burger King, Wendy's, and Taco Bell all next to each other because they want it normal. They want you to see all of these things together. So I'd say to you in closing also, that a lot of people think that teens are learning from each other, but they said teen, young adults, are more likely to take up marijuana if their parents use. Parents use marijuana, normalize it for kids. So parents need to explain why it's okay for the parents to use but not the kids. So parents, when you're ready to explain to your children why you can use and they cannot, then you need to step up. So I'm asking you to not make this a city where we say it's normal for the parents to use and not the teens, because they will one day be legally able to purchase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Catherine Holt. Kathy Geiger? Melanie Velasco?
No, Kathy's right there.
Kathy, I'm sorry. Come on, Kathy.
Come on, Miss Kathy.
I'm short. I'm Kathy Geiger. I'm also representing the Saginaw Prevention Coalition, and my concerns are some of the high THC cannabis products that are available in different places. Kevin Sabat, he is the CEO of Smart Approaches to Marijuana, and he has indicated that the marijuana of today is so different than it was back in the 2015. So, he said that it's a profoundly, excuse me, it's a product that's genetically bred to have very high concentrations of the psychoactive ingredient called THC. And then it's further extracted and concentrated to form a much higher potency product. When somebody smokes pot, the highest TCH concentration is about 30 to 35%. In 1995, potency was about 4%. In 2021, it rose to about 15%. Marijuana concentrates now have between 90 and 99% THC. Many customers are seeking the highest THC content and are willing to pay more for them. There's a lab in Ann Arbor, on the PSI lab, that had to close its doors. Their focus was actually on creating accurate tests and results. But when people came in, they were looking for the highest readings, and when their lab didn't provide the high readings that they were seeking, they went elsewhere. And so finally, PSI did have to close their doors. What this is, is an indicator that high THC products are sought after both by business owners and retail clients. These high THC products carry serious risks for youth. Youth brains are not finished developing until they're about 25 years old. Their bones stop growing at about 18, but their frontal lobe of their brain continues to grow and develop. So cannabis alters brain functions and piers problem-solving, judgment, and decision-making. It reduces perception and coordination. High THC products are tied to memory and learning problems, suicide, anxiety disorders, depression, and the development of psychosis. Perceptions of risk and availability are significant factors that facilitate initial use and ongoing use with youth. Individuals who perceive cannabis as both low-risk and available were 22 more times likely to have used cannabis in the past year than those perceiving cannabis as high-risk and unavailable. What that simply means is the more marijuana places that are around, they are exposed. So I urge the city to please be willing to take another look at the marijuana ordinance to try to create as healthy community as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melanie Velasco?
My name is Melanie Velasco. I did vote for medical marijuana, but there's just way too many of them all over. I totally agree. It is warping our children's minds. We want our children to be something in life. These are pictures, pictures, excuse me. I live at 908 Court Street, I'm apartment one. I moved in there, I'm sorry, thank you, council. Thank you. I'm so sorry, this is just from my foot. Anyway, thank you. I moved in there in June last year, and it's been one problem after another. It took me like two weeks to finally get electricity in my name. They chewed me out, chewed me out. The manager, she was, well, up doctor. But one problem after another, bedbugs, my hair throwback springs out. I've got that picture. I spray painted bedbugs, put it up on the dumpster, and everybody keeps turning it around. I know, I want everybody to know, 908 Court Street has bedbugs. So, hospital does not want to bring us our mail. We have to go to Cumberland to get our mail. I'm, I'm 62, and I recently retired, but I've been in disability for a while, for a five home health, I have back issues, I see a chiropractor, I see, all right, doctor. Saginaw's not what it used to be when I grew up. I just grew up, just down the road, I swam in it, it's just not the same. I want it where it was before. I know it may be a miracle, but we could work at it, I know we can. I could help. So, anyway, one problem after another. First, that's next video. First, this next video, we had electricity turned off in our hallway for almost two weeks. And my main floor, I put electrical cord and patio lights on my main floor. Pictures are on my other phone, but I couldn't get them. I got these pictures. So then the patio light broke, and so I put my lamp out there, so I lit that floor. Then we had water go off for two, two and a half hours. Stressful moments like that. Oh, then we had the water pipe broke again for 24 hours. Now we have roaches that have wings. They're this... I don't like bugs. I have two medical companion cats, and one of my cats will see them and tell me, and I'm weak. I got radish spray, and I swat them with the Blice water. I did not pay this month's rent since February, because I had to get my van fixed in case I got... Oops, oops. These are pictures of cockroaches.
Hand them to the clerk.
Right over here, ma'am.
Sorry?
You're okay. Thank you.
I need inspection, and my landlord's delinquent and taking care of issues.
Okay.
And poor lighting in the parking lot. And I'm often harassed. And just last week, I had, or two days ago, I had to call the police. And one of the tenants, he's screaming out at me at eleven o'clock at night at me while I'm outside, and he scared me half to death.
Miss Kathy? We're gonna refer... Miss Kathy, we're gonna refer to the departments, please.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? Okay? Thank you.
Yes. Have a good day.
Thank you. You as well.
Our next speaker is Alan Molesky.
Madam Mayor, council members, staff, my name is Alan Molesky. On December 15th, 2023, approximately 9:30 a.m., my son and his family had a house fire that originated in the kitchen. They live in the 3,000 block of Mackinac. My wife and I would like to express our extreme gratitude to the Saginaw City Fire Department for their quick and professional response to my family's emergency. It was outstanding. Luckily, the fire happened during the day when the family was home, and the smoke detector activated and alerted them to the fire. All family members were able to exit the house, including my nine-month-old grandson, who I, who we love dearly. They all are, they are all healthy and unharmed, except for being a little scared and shaken up. Our son recalls being on the phone with 911 dispatcher, and he could hear the fire trucks coming, indicating a very quick response. In my opinion, the Saginaw Fire Department personnel did an excellent job extinguishing the fire very quickly while limiting the damage to the house. They did not use excessive water, nor caused any other damage what was necessary. There was a family dog that ran out of the house during the evacuation, and two cats remained inside. The firefighters were able to locate all these animals for my family, even putting one of the cats inside the fire truck, just for shelter. We are so grateful for each and every one of the Saginaw Fire Department personnel who were on scene that day. They showed compassion, empathy, and concern. Words cannot express our gratitude. I knew they were always a good fire department, and actually a great fire department, because they know how to put fire out. I didn't know how great they were at customer service. We should be very proud of these individuals, down to interim Chief Hosbeck, Battalion Chief McCarthy, and A-Shift for that current day. Thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you. You know, it's always good to get some good comments. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Chris Pryor.
To our mayor, Mayor Protim, to the staff, city manager, wanted to say thank you for your commitment and hard work. Nobody knows when you're leading. There's so much responsibility and so much that comes at you. So our hats are off to the commendable work that you continue to do. As it has been shared on tonight, our concerns as leaders, as family, as a father, as a pastor, as one who sits on the chamber for the Saginaw Chamber Board, the Saginaw Community Foundation, I cannot speak on behalf of them, but I do speak as a concerned father of all the marijuana and retailers that we do have in our community. As our former mayor has stated, what is enough? Enough. Every dollar is not a good dollar. And so I ask us, we know the laws that have been there, we can't stop some of those, but if we can just kind of gaze this and look at different things in regards, how do we strengthen our community? We have a wonderful new high school that is coming downtown. I'm a part of our education school. Every Tuesday, some Thursdays, I attend Jesse Loomis at 7:30 in the morning to welcome all the students who come in. It is unfortunate that many of our students who come in do smell like marijuana. And so with that being the case, it is affecting our children, whether they're taking a puff or just leaving from around where their family is being affected by it. And so as a concerned father, citizen, wanting and knowing that our city is moving forward, I'm asking you to just take a look at it, to see how we can structure things. Many of people don't understand, if I'm trying to get employment, what do I do? If I go to get employment, I still have it. Doesn't mean that they're mandated to still be able to have a job. An employer can tell them that they don't, they cannot have a job. So it's bigger. Young men still driving and having. There are precautionary things that a lot of people are still not known, not well-known about. And the concern that I have when I see the signs up there, and they say all these different things that are almost enticing still to smoke marijuana, it's a major concern. And so I pray as a community, as a pastor, that we will work together in regards to finding something that minimizes so that we can continue to bring new employment into this wonderful city. A few months ago, I asked you to never forget about the East Side as we continue to do all that we can to bring businesses into our wonderful city. So I just ask that from the bottom of my heart. I want to continue to commend you on the work that you've done. I see many of you at many of the different events, and so we say thank you. But every dollar is not a good dollar. And so I ask you to just continue to remember that. God bless you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
Council members, you have three minutes as well. We began tonight with Councilman Ball.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank the citizens for coming here and expressing your views on what you want your city to look like and be like. I'm truly concerned about all the marijuana dispensaries in the city of Saginaw. You know, I went, rode down Genesee Street, and I was telling my wife, I said, man, it's amazing that the only people that want to invest in our city on the East Side are with marijuana dispensaries, you know? And it's disheartening. You know, it, we know we have a lot of people here that have issues with hope, and then we've got other people that want to help them out with that with dope, so they can just forget about the issues, but they're gonna still be there. You know, and I personally don't like it, you know? But I think that we do need to take a look at this, because it looks terrible to see the only investment on the East Side of Saginaw is a marijuana dispensary. I mean, it really doesn't look good. I look in other, in other neighborhoods, East Side, West Side, Township, they don't let, they don't let you do, put those many marijuana dispensaries on one street like that, you know? It's a shame that that's, like I said, is that all they want to invest in. We need to try to invest in giving our children more hope. I appreciate Pastor Pryor for even having a church in Buena Vista, buying an old school here in the middle of the city of Saginaw to give our children some hope. That's what we need today. We need more hope and less dope. I just thought about a young kid who I've been mentoring and the problems he was causing his mother before he went to the Michigan Youth Challenge Academy that I suggested he go to. And before he left, he was doing drugs, thinking about committing suicide. He was smoking marijuana. He had made a pipe out of a plastic bottle. He made a crack pipe out of it at sixteen years old. You know, what are we teaching our kids? But thank God, he's still at Michigan Youth Academy. He want to be a welder, pipe fitter. You know, I thank God for that. He got away from the drugs, and now he had opportunity, he can graduate from school a year early even, and now he want to go and be a tradesman. So I know when we get this stuff away from our kids, that they will grow and they will prosper, but we gotta do something to help our kids out. And, you know, so I'm always coming here talking about the Big Brothers and Sisters Program and mentoring program, because we have a lot of parents here who used to be involved in drug trade and stuff like that, and they end up getting locked up, or either they got locked up for being in the drug trade, and you know where it comes down with that. Then you got people that's shooting each other because you selling dope on my corner and all that kind of stuff like that. So we have a culture of no hope here in Saginaw, and we can do something about it, you know? I appreciate the mayor for getting with other gentlemen, with the help organizations, so we can talk to these young guys, and it's helping. We can see the hope that's coming into their eyes when we talk to them, because we have some adults that want to help alleviate some of these problems we got with less parents at home. So we can do something about this. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Oystad.
Thanks, Mayor. Excuse me. Welcome, everybody, out tonight, and I hope you've been enjoying some of the recent sunshine that we're having, or at that time of the year. Happy Black History Month, and also Happy President's Day to everybody. I want to thank everybody that came out to talk about the marijuana ordinance tonight. I will offer you this, you had three minutes to talk. I didn't have a chance to talk back. I'm open for a conversation. If you email me, I will call you back if you give me your phone number. If you want to call the manager's office, I will say right now, authorize them to give my phone number to you so that you can call me and we can have a conversation. So please, I know that I'm offering that for you, and I will, I hope that you take advantage of it, because I really want to have this conversation. Thank you. I attended the final game of Arthur Hill and the Saginaw High School this weekend at the Dow Vent Center. I can say that there were more people in attendance to that game than I've seen at a hockey game. It was absolutely amazing. I got actually quite emotional a couple of times, and I didn't even go to the high schools. But I understand when it's the end of an era, and my high school is also closed as well from Bay City. Miss Velasco, we talked before the meeting tonight, and I think you did a great job. You got your point out there. The point is, you got some inspections stuff, and I know it's tough to talk in front of people sometimes. I still get a little nervous, like I said, shaken. So thank you for coming out and sharing your, the city staff will get, they'll look into and get back with you, okay? So you did a great job. Also, I do want to thank Unity in the community. They invited us to come over and get some education and some talk at one of their neighborhood meetings about the tax cap. There's been a few buzzes around that lately. There's a group of citizens that have formed, and they are meeting once a month. And I've attended some of their meetings just to hear what their, what their initiatives are, and also to help share any education that I can on the tax cap. But I also want to thank our prior mayor, Mayor Clock, who also attended with me. He was able to give some really good historical perspectives about the tax cap and how it affected the city, especially with Parks and Rec was kind of the first to go, and I believe there was over 200 jobs that were lost in the city at that point. So when we talk about Parks and Recreation, that has been affected by our tax cap. Also, too, I do see some interesting things on the news and social media, and so I've got a few minutes, a few seconds left here. So fourth grader Audrey Campbell just wrote Jesse Rouse's Elementary School official song. She's a rapper who likes to play basketball, and so it's called "The Rouse House," and thank you W N E M for covering that story. So congratulations to her and to her initiative and the things that she's doing. That little girl's gonna go places after listening to her interview. Mayor, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Didn't get to make it to the last meeting, was a little under the weather. Took me a little bit, but I'm starting to feel myself, so that's a good thing. Just want to say thanks for the invite out at the Dow for the last game for Arthur Hill and Trojans. Arthur Hill won. I didn't go to either school as well, but they put on a good performance, and, I mean, it was really well, safety and everything, so kudos to everybody who had a part in that. The city ran smooth, and it was a great time for us to come together as one and have a good time and show out, and that's what we can do all the time. It doesn't have to be somebody always bickering or getting into things, as we see with the Chiefs. Prayers for those who lost the one during that parade, you know? It happens anywhere and everywhere. Crime does not discriminate. The devil stays busy. So I just want to say it was a good game. I actually, during the day, I went, thanks to Diane Keenan for East Side Soup Kitchen. I went and volunteered with La Luna 1098, Armando Ramos, and it was a really cold day that day, and I didn't wear my coat, not knowing that I was going to be outside as well. And also, the Great Lakes had their mobile bus there, so it was a great time, always giving back to the community, especially the homelessness, you know? During these times, it's really a hard time for everybody, if you've ever been in that situation, or you haven't, you know, you have to have some sympathy. I mean, it's hard going to ask for things, and it just was a really great turnout. They gave out food, and even the people that came in got a bag to go, you know? So they're just doing really great events at these East Side Soups, Soup Kitchen. The February 21st and the 28th, from 5 to 8, they're having Grateful Pasta Night fundraiser. So if you can come on out, it's at 417 Hancock Street, and they're going to be giving money back to go towards East Side Soup Kitchen. Also, the Children's Museum, they always say there's not enough to do in Saginaw. I know there's a lot to do, because we get invited to a lot of stuff, and sometimes I feel bad, I just can't be everywhere at once. But at the Children's Museum on the 24th, it says, join us for a Day of Global Cultures, Fun and Excitement, from 10 to 4, and in the World Culture Day. So take care of your kids. They have really great stuff going on, educational for the kids. We had my grandson's first birthday party there, and it was really great, so if you have time. Also, this Friday, at the church, Radiant Church on Genesee, they're having their food giveaway, and now you can text online and get a number for the food giveaway. And then also, Old Town is every Saturday at 10 o'clock, so if you know anybody of need, there's a lot of great churches and that in our community that are really giving back, and I can't thank those enough that are stepping up for our community and helping with these hard times that we're having. Thank you, God bless, and thanks for all the speakers that came. We hear you. We feel your pain, we understand, and we will be getting back with you. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Floris.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Saginaw. Thank you to all the folks that came out. It's great to see the former mayor here, former council members, a congressional candidate that's walked out the door. But really great to make sure that everybody's being involved with the city. You know, last time that we spoke, I had recognized all of my colleagues for Black History Month. I did forget, perhaps to me, the most important member on this dais, which is Councilwoman, Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia, who, to me, it would be a crime not to recognize her, so I do apologize about that. But you are one of the most amazing people that has spearheaded a lot of important things that are going on in the city, including working with the youth. I think the stuff that she's done, let the youth speak, and just in general, sitting down and talking with folks has been a direct correlation to reducing the amount of crime that we've seen in the city of Saginaw in 2023. So just want to put that out there. Care about you deeply. Yeah, congratulations to Arthur Hill. I showed up around 7:40. I have a tendency to sometimes be tardy. I was stuck outside with some folks, and we were not allowed in. So for those that did pay for a ticket, you can get ahold of Ticketmaster, just type in Ticketmaster refunds and exchanges. It was sad to see that they weren't allowed. I know there's security concerns, but at the same time, for those that paid for a ticket not to be allowed into the venue, it was disappointing to see. There's about 25 or 30 of them. The only other thing that I have to say outside of the ordinances, for those of us that weren't on city council when it passed, we'll definitely continue to take a look at that. I represent a lot of workers, especially in the healthcare industry, something that Saginaw's trying to expand. I do get calls from time to time about people spelling like marijuana. So I know that employers are at a different place than what the law is, but that's important, especially when we're trying to create jobs. And then last, if anybody has any information on the murders of Keyshawn Banks, Kwan Lee, Quay Smithers, Mario Bulger, Pamela Whitson, Ryan Clemmons, Roy Whitson, Cortez Hampson, Mazzy Rudisson, Jonathan Lamar Van, and Randolph Pacino, please call 1-800-422-5245, and that's Crime Stoppers, if you have any information leading to the arrest of their killers. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Poplin.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to our public speakers who joined us this evening, everyone who's spoken, your concerns, what you shared this evening. Thank you. And also to our tax rule hearing, those comments, thank you for being here. I think since I've been on council, tonight was the most I've had regarding our tax rules. So thank you coming to share, and please know that your council is listening. So, thank you coming to share, and please know that your council is listening to you. I do, um, as this is our last meeting in Black History Month, I do want to share some Black History facts about the great city of Saginaw. I do want to acknowledge Mr. Ruben Daniels, who was the first African American to serve as the president of the Board of Education from 1971 to 73. He was also the second black police officer in 1947, and Ms., Mrs. Frances M. Carter in 1965 became the first African American principal for the Saginaw School District at the Potter Elementary School. So, I do want to just take some times, I think for me, um, always remembering history. A lot of the times that I just shared, there are people who may have been born in 1965 or remember what was going on during that time. So, realizing that these impacts, there's a little sprinkle still in our community, and so the fight is not over. We still must be fight for equity and justice in all that we do. And I thank you for everyone that shared this evening that as we celebrate Black History Month, it is not just the past, it is the current future. Um, I think, uh, Councilman Oster shared about the fourth, fourth grader. These young people in our community are continuing to make history. It is surprising that now in 2023, we still hear the first this, the first that. So, that means that we should never be tired of working towards justice and equality and equity in all that we do. So, as I say that, I want to encourage our residents, the pre-voting, early voting centers are open. I ask that the city of Saginaw, we see the statistics of our voting record. There are a lot of things at stake for our nation, our state, and our community. I ask that you take this time, stop by 618 CAS for your early voting. Um, I would do want to give a shout out to our county clerk, Vanessa Greer, who has been, I called it a tour. Everywhere I go, she's somewhere with some flyers talking about this and the impact that it has in our community. Um, and I have to stop by. It's even open on a Saturday and a Sunday, y'all. We can go. They are making it accessible for all people to vote. I have had some people ask about, well, what if I, um, if I have absentee ballot? Well, if you still want to vote in person, take that with you. Um, cancel out all the narratives about, all the craziness about elections. I can tell you that the city of Saginaw, BV, Saginaw County, the state of Michigan, our clerk, our county clerks are doing everything to uphold this election. So, I encourage you all, take this opportunity. There, if I just said in 1965 was the first black, we're still fighting for the right to vote. So, continue and don't take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. First of all, I'd like to say thank everyone that, uh, came to city council today and, uh, to see your city council. What we do, what we try to do, we're working for you. Um, I'd like to thank all of, uh, the public speakers, and I must acknowledge our former mayor, Mayor Seals. Thank you so much. Uh, don't have a lot to say, but, um, anyone looking for free tax preparation, you can dial your 211. They're doing, uh, Free Taxes United Way along with Frankenmove Credit Union, so that's something really good. Also, the Michigan Department of State is doing a road to restoration for your driver's license if you know anyone that needs to get their driver's license back. Um, that's gonna be a free clinic. Also, the, uh, on to be Wednesday, March the 20th, and that's gonna be at SVRC, and that's 20, 203 South Washington Street, and walk-ins from noon to 4:00 PM. So, uh, that might, those are a couple of things you might want to jot down and take advantage of. And like I said, I don't have a lot to say, but thank you very much for joining us at city council. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro-Ted Bench.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening to everyone. Um, thank you to all of our public speakers and to those of you who came forward about the single lot special assessment. Um, staff will get back to you and, and follow up with you and let you know if there was an error or what resolution there is for that, um, similarly to the way they do with public comment. But, um, Mr. Williams, I know that's probably not what you wanted to hear, but I did go through your document while we were sitting here, and, um, Detective Sergeant Giraud was correct. The animal control shelter would be the agency that would be able to help you with those animals. Um, that is, that is their department. It's the Saginaw County Animal Control Shelter. Um, you would, you can call them pretty much anytime. If they're not there, you can leave them a message, but I would definitely reach out to them and let them know that there's an issue with the dogs because they will come out, they will investigate, and they will write tickets appropriately. Um, also to Ms. Velasco, I'm very sorry that you're going through what you're going through. I think one of the most heartbreaking situations, at least for me in my time on council, is hearing from people who are renting from landlords who are not being responsible, um, because there's a limited amount of things that the city can do via code enforcement, and hopefully, I know people are listening, and they will be, um, attending to those things that they can do. But I would strongly, strongly urge you to reach out to the Eastern, uh, the legal services of Eastern Michigan because you need legal representation and you need their expertise. So, please, um, reach out to them, and we can always leave you with our cards if you need anything else like that. But, um, I did send a few text messages to some people, local agencies who help people, and I'm gonna keep asking questions and see if there's anybody who has assistance out there that might be able to assist you with some of the things you're dealing with. Um, to our other speakers who are here about the marijuana ordinance, um, as somebody who supported the ordinance, um, and the marijuana establishments being here in town, um, I think we all kind of figured that there would be a, uh, kind of an influx, and then it would taper back, and I think we are kind of getting to that point where it is going to start tapering back. I think this last year, I was told we only had two new applications, um, and that doesn't mean that they're all going forward, but, um, I'm also the mother of teenagers. I also go, uh, in and out of our schools, and I'm very well familiar at how some of our students smell, whether it's their own activities or the adults around them. Um, but I recognize that I have a responsibility as a parent separate from my responsibility as a council member to ensure that my kids understand what these things are, understand why they're not allowed to do them, and, um, you know, make sure that they're, I'm holding them accountable. But one of the conversations I had with former Mayor Seals earlier today, we talked about, um, lock boxes, and I know that's something that we've talked about when it comes to gun safety and things like that, but if that's something that we could talk about further and maybe get together and advertise that and start getting some of those lock boxes that she referred to out there to some of these parents, at least we can secure people's marijuana stashes in their own homes and maybe limit youth access to them that way. So, thank you.
Thank you. I hate being the last one to talk because it's all over with by the time it gets to me. Citizens, thank you so much for coming out speaking. Ms. Velasco, we, my heart goes out, and I'm sure we're gonna do everything in our powers, everything that we can do to help you. As for the individuals who spoke on the tax, somebody will be getting back to you to give you some information or something. I'm sure of that. Again, Saginaw, we're coming up, and coming up is gonna be some growing pains. I'm not saying that everything's perfect, and I'm not saying they were perfect, but we're trying. That I can remember being in Saginaw in all my life, not having anybody that I felt like fought for me. So, I decided to fight for others in more ways than one. The good part about Saginaw is this, is that we are a loving city, and we do care. Whether people want to admit it or not, we care. We may not be able to fix everything, but we can try to give you an avenue to go get it fixed. This week has been a good week. I went on Friday to a game with some of my peers. Some of them were just so silly because we had a rivalry going on, "Black and Go, sweep, sweep, Black and Go." Then I had the lumberjacks. And so, you know how I felt when we lost, but you know what? It still was a monumental time. It was a time where they're so right. There was nothing going on. Everybody was on their best behavior. If we can do it then, why can't we do it always? One of the things that I really love is that I'm, I'm gonna keep saying to Saginaw, all we need is love. We gotta learn how to love one another again. If we can begin to love, then we'll see a bigger difference than what we're seeing. I don't know what else to say, but you know my saying, it's a, it's a new season, it's a new day. Fresh anointing has come our way. It is the spirit of power and prosperity. It's a new season. Saginaw, walk with us into the new season. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
That takes us to reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I would also, uh, congratulate the Dow Event Center and all the schools and the Saginaw Valley League that participated because that was, that, it was the whole weekend, you know. It was a great event. It was all day Saturday with the other schools playing, so they did a great job, and, uh, we didn't have issues. We had cooperating agencies, so it was very good to see. Um, and I was, um, glad to hear these comments, uh, about the fire department and just the experience that the family had that had a, uh, a tragic event at their home. So, anytime you see the fire department, it's probably one of the worst days that you have because of what they respond to. So, that customer service really is one of the things that they focus on. But if you look at things about, um, public safety response time, I'll tell you that the Saginaw Fire Department has one of the best response times around, um, better than a lot of communities that have far more resources than we have. So, that's, I know, something that they're very proud of. But I encourage, uh, any council member, if you haven't had a chance to go to the fire department or any members of the public, they're very open. They'll talk to you about what they do. Um, they do cardiac response in the city. Um, they have a lot of, uh, response for, related to, uh, drug overdoses. They have water rescue. They have home rescue. They have educational opportunities for youth. They have, uh, smoke alarms that they put into homes and other safety, uh, educational programs for homes. So, they, they do quite a bit. Um, I know, uh, the individual talked about the pets. They have resuscitation equipment for animals, which is something that, that you don't see very often. So, and, and they are very up on their technology, lifesaving technology. So, if you ever want to learn more about the fire department, just let us know and, and we'll, uh, we'll get you in there. Um, the mayor did, uh, mention the Memorial Cup, too. That's coming up three months, a little over three months. So, we're still preparing with that, and we're working with the Spirit and the O H L. And finally, uh, council members did receive a copy, but we do have the 2023, um, Police Victim Services Unit Report. And again, we thank the, uh, the Saginaw City Council for support in, in putting that in place. We did not have a city employee working on that for several years. Uh, council funded that a few budget cycles ago. So, now we have one, uh, division coordinator that is a city employee, and we have two specialists that are grant funded, and they work with several agencies throughout, uh, the city of Saginaw and Saginaw County. They, in 2023, they, um, had almost 2,000 cases assigned to them, 1,999 in the year. Uh, they provided 9,171 services and had 1,301 referrals to social service agencies. So, uh, without those, with staff members and group of, uh, employees working on that, I mean, where do those individuals go? What type of contact do they have? So, um, and, uh, this is another area where if you are interested in learning more about it, let us know because we can, uh, have you talk to those individuals. Um, they go out and they actually talk to people who have been impacted by crime. So, it's a, it's a great unit to have, and, um, we do appreciate continued support for that. So, Madam Mayor, that concludes the management update.
Do we have any questions for the city manager?
Yes, sir.
May you look into another date for the firefighter. I wasn't able to make what we got to do with firefighters.
Oh, certainly. Yeah.
It's your fault.
I was working.
Yeah, we'll definitely do that again. If anyone didn't get an opportunity to participate
in that, we can set something else up for that. I did have one more thing I, I did on my list that I forgot to mention, um, because a couple or several council members have asked me about how, what are we gonna do as we come up on these timelines for ARPA? So, my recommendation is to council that we go through all of the allocations that we have in early summer, uh, end of May, early June, review where they are for their capital purchases so that we can make sure they're getting to the point that they need to be by the year end, and if it's for programming, that they have a plan set up on how they're gonna expend those funds so that we make sure we don't have any money left at the end of the grant period. So, that was, that was something that I wanted to update you on as well.
Councilwoman Sylvia, she had her hand up.
Thank you very much. Um, excuse me. Um, some of the, uh, young people, uh, got up and spoke about the marijuana dispensaries. I wanted to know, um, how feasible, how, how can, uh, they asked about mor, some people asked about a moratorium on dispensaries and I guess license, et cetera. How likely is that to happen? Can that happen? Can it be looked into?
Well, that's a council action, so, uh, would actually, for the legal issues, I'd return it over to the city attorney.
And also, um, I gave out, um, some packets. Some council people got them, some didn't in regards to the, uh, Saginaw Promise, and you should have gotten one. And I went to their, uh, last meeting. It was so informative, and what I wanted to know, uh, could, uh, Saginaw Promise and come, excuse me, and make a presentation to council in regard, because I couldn't do it, of all the work that they're doing and how, if at all, the, uh, the city and/or council could, uh, possibly, uh, help in that particular area. I know, uh, Councilman Boss told me at one time that he actually sat on the board for, uh, Saginaw Promise, and it, it, it's a very, very, very good, uh, committee and things that they're doing. So, I'd like to know if they could possibly come and do a presentation and maybe have some court, work, question answered back and forth.
Yeah, I think they have come before, so we'll, we'll check on that and I'll.
They have. She normally comes every so often to give us an update on how many scholarships, what they're doing, and I, I was looking and, Miss Seals.
They're doing a lot. They're doing a lot now, a lot of different things that, you know, could also help the city. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll have that on our follow-up.
Councilman Boss.
Yes, I, I wanted to use this, uh, point of special privilege to ask the, uh, city manager a question. Did he know who was one of the first black lifeguards that held a swimming pool? And, uh, I want to let you know it was our ma, mayor.
You know what? Sometimes people just tell all, sometimes people just tell all your business to the folks.
Hey, but when I was a kid, I didn't tell people because I only wanted to be look at you, so I didn't tell everybody that.
I was not the first black. I was the first black female.
That's what I'm saying.
I bought that chair, you know, but I love swimming. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Flores, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, with the request of information that was, I had put in, uh, last week for the interest amount for the ARPA funds, so currently, that sits at $2.86 million?
Mm-hmm. It's probably a little bit more now because that was at year end.
Yep. So, another 200,000 perhaps. But that's not, um, tied to the, uh, final rules of the U S Treasury, correct?
Right. That's correct, yeah.
But it still might be the intention of the city to pay for the, um, additional work that Guide House might do for the programming dollars for nonprofits after we've been able to dole out all the money?
Yeah. So, what, what you have there is that, that funding is tied to, um, is being earned off of that ARPA allocation, but it's not subject to the rules for ARPA. So, you can use it on anything that's allowable under the state of Michigan guidelines for municipalities to spend money on. So, you could use that to fund the consulting fees that we have if it's over what, you know, we have allocated, uh, within the ARPA program. Um, you could also use it for, if there's any kind of potential unapproved or unallowable costs that we end up having to pay back. I think that's a, a good source for that because then it's not coming out of the general fund. Otherwise, that would come out of the general fund. Um, but it will, it will continue to grow. As you know, right now, interest rates are pretty high.
Yeah.
Uh, given, in the past, I would say, we would not have that kind of interest revenue from these funds. We've had, haven't seen that for years and years, but for the time being, it will continue to grow. So, um, I think you probably can count on that same level of monthly income, at least until it gets spent down. You know, now we're starting to spend it, so it will, it will obviously reduce from that, but yeah.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Our next item is the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on S G TV channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So, move.
So, move. Do I have any exceptions? All those that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to board commission and committee reports.
Do we have any boards or commission reports to do? Yes.
Thanks, Mayor. Just for the public's knowledge, because I talked about the planning commission meeting. It should have been tomorrow, but it has been canceled. We didn't have any cases. But at the last planning commission meeting, we did do a special use permit for a restaurant. And I just want to welcome J.R.'s Ribs. I hope they have a successful business. They're going to be at 2926 Hess. I did tell them that when they do open, to come and get three minutes on the public input and tell us all about it. Because if they've got homemade mac and cheese, I'm first in line. Thank you.
Any other reports? Madam Clerk.
Takes us to miscellaneous business.
Do we, are there any motions or anything at this time? Okay. I need a motion to adjourn. Is there moved in support? All those that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Everybody have a good evening.